Would you call the roll please?
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item two is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held March 7th, 2016. Item B, accept sanitary sewer, water, and drainage improvements for the following additions: Avondale addition located south of northeast 27th Street and east of Eastern Avenue; Belmar North addition, section two, located south of 34th Street and west of Sinner Road; Cinderella Lakes addition, section one, located south of 34th Street, excuse me, southwest 34th Street and west of Telephone Road; Sienna Ridge addition, section two, located west of Bryant Avenue and north of northeast 27th Street; Sonoma Lakes addition, section one, located east of Bryant Avenue and north of northeast 12th Street. Item C is accept the public water and sewer improvements for the 35 West apartments located north of southwest 19th Street and west of Telephone Road. Item D is reappoint Tom Baker, Tatlinus Walter Weirun for electrical board for a term of two years. Item E is appoint Danny Quinn and Danny Thomas to the electrical board for a term of two years. Item F is reappoint Glenn Hollingsworth, Brian Moody, and Frank Randall to the mechanical board for a term of two years. Item G, reappoint Ken Davidson, Dale Fenner, Colby Hendricks, and Brandon Morrison to the plumbing board for a term of two years. Item H is approve of budget supplement to fund 14 in the amount of $2,805,000 to reflect the bond proceeds received from the May 2016 Park Central Obligation Bond Issue. And item I is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2015-2016 in the amount of $7,561,084.24.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider approval of a supplement in the amount of $10,569 to the engineering services agreement with EST Incorporated for I-35 Southwest 34th Street Bridge Project to conduct a detailed social and economic impact analysis as part of the environmental assessment process per ODOT requirement.
Mayor, just as this agenda item says, this is an amendment to the contract with EST for the design work on the bridge project. This was an additional requirement to ODOT for some additional work on the environmental process for clearing the bridge project from the environmental perspective. It's work that we didn't expect to have to do in the beginning, but were advised by ODOT today we're going to require it as a result of discussions with FHWA Federal Highway. So with federal dollars involved with this, we have to comply with all of the federal requirements for projects.
Will you delay the project?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Make motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Another discussion, would you call for the vote please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the city council meeting and convene the more public works authority meeting. Item number four is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular more public works authority meeting held March 7th, 2016. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2015-2016 in the amount of $340,898.91.
Move to approve.
Second. Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote please?
Terry Kabner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. This time, we will recess the more public works authority meeting and convene the more risk management meeting. Item number five is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular more risk management meeting held March 7th, 2016. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2015-2016 in the amount of $221,477.45.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote please?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the more risk management meeting and convene the more economic development authority meeting. Terry, I believe too.
Item six is the roll call. Call the roll please.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
Item seven is the consent docket. Item A is to receive and approve the minutes of the regular more economic development authority meeting of February 17th, 2016.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you both. Would you call for the vote please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Yes. At this time, we will recess the more economic development authority meeting if we can convene the city council meeting.
All right, thank you. Item number eight is new business. We reflect on the minutes that all the members that were present before are still here. Item eight is citizens' form for items not on the agenda. We have one citizen signed up. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, counsel. I appreciate you having me and us with you. I'm here actually representing the three Moore High School swim teams. We have invited all of the swimmers and their parents here. If you could stand and just recognize yourself. And also with me as part of this edition, I have Mr. Josh Davis, a three-time Olympian and gold medalist, and also Coach Long, the head coach of the swim program. He's a future candidate to come up as well. This petition is actually something I talked with Mr. Jensen about a couple weeks ago and petitioned and had some discussion and follow-up on that. But we just want to recognize the accomplishments of the high school swim teams, the importance of swimming in our community, and also come here kind of hand a little bit with the petition in ways that the high schools, the community, and the city can partner together for the well-being of the community and the use of your facilities and try to help keep them more vibrant and growing and attractive to many people. So right now, I'd like to turn it over to Coach Long to have a brief talk, and then I'll come back.
Thank you very much. Thank you guys for letting us fill up your chambers tonight and business with you. It's an honor to be here. Last year, as you know, CCC closed their cooldown, and they didn't let us know until April, which put us in kind of tailspin. And as of early July, 4th of July, it looked like the swimming program was going to come to an end. And I made a couple proposals to our district athletic director, Mr. Fitzgerald, about letting kids, you want to swim, you know, if they swim for the club, if they practice on the road, if they train on the road, if you can still have a team. And he went ahead and gave us the okay to give that a try. And it's not ideal. It's not ideal not to practice every day. It's not ideal not to see your swimmers every day. But that's what we had to do to keep them alive, and that's what we did. And the kids that we have at Moore and around the metro are very dedicated to swimming. It's a great life long-sorted, as you guys probably know. And going about the way that we did, we were still able to qualify 19 kids for the state swim meet back in February and took two more as alternates. So in all, we got to send 21 kids to the state swim meet. They got to experience two days of competition, and you got on the metal stand, and it was just a great experience for lots of kids in a very trying situation. With a little bit of help and a little bit of routine and steady coaching and all of those things, the program, of course, will do better. We had 75 to 80 kids in this program just a year ago, and because of the loss of the pool, they ended up dropping to the 30s. But the quality was very good, you know, in terms of the kids qualified for the state swim meet, so that's a good thing. I guess what we're asking for you, from you, is just in this time of great budget cuts and all the things that are going on in public ed, that anything that the city can do to help make up or anything that the schools are not going to be able to do, or the state's not going to be able to do in the near future, would be great. I've been coaching now 30 years, and I certainly believe that the school, their main function is academics. I've also for 30 years seen the other side of it too, the extracurricular things that kids do and how it benefits people by being involved in these other activities, the discipline, the hard work, learning how to win, learning how to lose, sportsmanship, and the list goes on and on of all those things that you get from extracurricular activities. But anything that you guys can do in the future, and of course, we're talking about the swimming pool, the new swimming pool that's opened up, that can help us get lane time or access to the water, any of those sorts of things would be a great benefit to us. And we look forward to visiting with you guys in the future about possibly scheduling some time and working out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Josh Davis. I grew up in San Antonio, Texas, and 16 neighborhoods in San Antonio have a nice six-lane, 25-yard pool, a traditional training pool that serves as their neighborhood swim team and their neighborhood swimming pool. And I was very fortunate when I was 10 years old to move into one of those neighborhoods that had lane space, and I fell in love with swimming. And a few years later, I came across a great coach that helped me make the high school team, and that I eventually became one of the top swimmers in the country. That gave me a full scholarship. OU did not have a swim team, so I had to go to UT instead. Sorry about that. And thankfully, at UT, we also had the Olympic head coach at UT, and I trained for four years there. And then finally in 1996, when I was 23 years old, I went to the Atlanta Olympic Games, and I won three gold medals. I brought my three gold medals to show you tonight, and you guys can check it out later. But anyway, when I was on the podium singing that anthem, wearing that gold medal in front of our country in the '96 Olympics, I thought back how grateful I was for my coaches, my parents, my family. But then I thought back to how great it was to have a pool, and the city leaders, and the people, and the visionaries who made the pool. Because without the pool, I couldn't have done any of those things. And I'm real excited that Moore is going to have a pool in the summer. But we need to have access to swimming lanes during the school year. And a lot of towns put a bubble over it during the school year, so they can use those lane lines during the school year. And the swimmers, high school swimmers can use it in the morning, and the different age level folks can use it during the work hours. And then, of course, you can have the little ones and the kids use it in the afternoons, and then the high school kids use it again, because we train twice a day, an hour and a half in the morning, an hour and a half at night ideally. And what that does is the swimmers traditionally have top GPAs, a lot of them go swimming college, and just maybe someone from here goes on to have their Olympic dreams made possible because they have a pool. So I just want to thank you for your time and for the consideration to possibly get a bubble over this pool and create more training opportunities for our young people to develop not only as students, but student athletes. And I think that will open doors for a lot of our young people that we'll enjoy for many decades to come. So thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I know I'm running a little bit long, but we'll be very quick. The proposal that I presented to Mr. Jensen here, we talked about several weeks ago, was options to cover the new pool in order to provide that year-round swimming. And I understand from discussions with him earlier today and back there, there's some difficulties in doing that. But even so, I appreciate the willingness of the council, mayor, and all to make accommodations to help the team be able to practice. And as I said, having a dedicated place to practice, routine places, not all the kids can be part of private clubs and get that five-day-a-week training. In fact, many of the best athletes and half the ones that went to state are not members of clubs, and they're just part of the high school swim program. And we almost have a whole generation here that's going to be missing out on swimming. And so just the ability to do maybe less structural improvements of negative air, you know, pressure canopies that don't have as many foundation requirements, or maybe in the future, making modifications or improvements to the pool to allow it to be all-weather, we would greatly appreciate that. Again, swimming is vitally important to the community, as you see from the outpouring, vitally important to these kids. And good high school programs attract people to the town. The year-round facility actually helps improve the maintenance of the facility, pools when they cave in, when they're not used, and waters in them. Keeping them active year-round helps the paint, helps the maintenance, the pumps, and the structure itself lasts longer, better service to that. Also allows the city to provide greater services to the community as a whole. So we're looking at this as really ways to help the city promote overall health and well-being of all age groups year-round and be able to also make good use of your facilities. So I appreciate you listening to us, and I look forward to continuing discussions with the city staff, and I greatly appreciate their professionalism and also the true hard look that you guys have taken to this petition. I'm very honored that you've entertained it. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a couple of questions here briefly. Have you, what conversations have you had with the school? What is, what are their plans now that they've been encouraged, having closed and the school deciding to close its swimming pool versus making the renovations? Do they have any plans?
I would like to turn that over to Coach Long here for me.
As far as I know, there are no plans for the school. You know, they had the opportunity of Moore High School had some leak issues here a couple years ago. They had a pool there. I don't know if you're aware of that or not, but they put that in, but that's no longer than that. They would rather farm it out, let us go somewhere else and swim rather than have to worry about the maintenance and the cost and all that. And of course, a couple years later, OCCC dropped them off, and so we kind of lost out there. But as far as I know, there are no plans for the school to build a pool.
So are they just not interested in continuing swimming as an option for students in Moore?
Yeah, I don't think so. They're very supportive of us swimming. I just don't think they're too excited about building a pool now that they and the city can partner on something. I think that's a possibility. But I don't think they are going to want to build a pool on the site by themselves at one of the three high schools. I don't think that's a possibility.
I would, I do know when they were considering closing that pool, I was at that school board meeting, and I wasn't even there to speak in opposition of the closing. And the discussion, I remember, and it's been a few years ago, was that to make the repairs to the swimming pool was going to be about a million dollars, and to convert it to gymnasium was going to be about a million dollars. And so I sent an email to all of the school board members at the time, and never heard back from any of them. So I think they had just decided that they would rather close the pool than to deal with all the maintenance costs. And that sounds like that may have been what happened at the community college, but they're just so expensive to operate.
And the thing about that too, at the time, Moore High School, of course, used the pool at Moore High School, Southmore and Westmore. We traveled OCCC like we'd always have, close and convenient and simple. And so that was just going to be the plan. The plan was just going to shift Moore High School over to Oklahoma City. And after three or four years, of course, OCCC sat down and that left everybody. Any other question?
Does the University of Oklahoma have any facilities that are available?
They do. They have facilities that are available to Norman and Morganor High School and to Sinner Swim Club. But for us to go down and anyway use those facilities, we'd have to use those facilities at eight or nine o'clock at night during the week or during off time, times that we just, we couldn't do.
Is that the same for Rose State College?
I think Rose State, possibly so, but also the distance.
Yeah.
Because Oklahoma Christian has a pool that's not being used now since Edmund has built their facility at the Bridge Park. That's where Edmund used to practice. But they say we're not going to transport our kids that far each day. And our cost would be a part of that too, of course, but it wasn't.
Would the school provide transportation?
School would.
If we were to, you guys rarely use that pool up there?
Yes.
They would, they'd provide us?
They'd provide us and the drivers.
And would all three swim teams or schools meet at different times?
We would, we would most likely practice the same time.
Thank you very much.
Just to say that we've had the conversations the gentleman mentioned, and we will be more than glad to look at scheduling and make the pool available during the hours of the summertime. That's obviously when the pool is going to be open because it's an outdoor pool. So we will certainly do that.
Well, what about the possible idea of a dome or the ball pool or something?
Well, we looked at it preliminarily, not in great detail, but the pool and the project really wasn't designed for something like that. And we don't know a cost at this point, but there's not any funding that's identified for it either, in terms of either upfront cost and/or operational costs over time.
Okay. Well, just, I don't know. I would just thought, you know, all the people out there, if we do, as Mr. E said, the funding to build this dome and all the operational things. But if the schools are interested in maybe participating, helping with that in some way, it would be, it would be a way to continue the discussion. You know, obviously there's no guarantees, but right now, kind of what I'm hearing during the off-season, swimming season is the winter months, right? It'd be available during the summer, but during the off-season, obviously not.
Well, we'd certainly be glad to visit with the school district, but no one's contacted us from the school district to visit.
It would be hard for us to do a bond issue to put a dome over it, since the school just ate up all the millage for the funding for the whole county, $209 million bond issue that they just did, and they didn't include it, which signifies to me they don't want it.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Well, I'm a fan of swimming. My son swam in high school, he was team captain over at Westmore once upon a time. Certainly anything we, as the city, can do to help. I'm more than willing to do that. I don't know how much we could do. Certainly that discussion needs to continue.
It does. I agree. Okay.
Thank all of y'all for coming.
Absolutely. Appreciate it.
Okay. Item B is items from the city council or trustees.
One quick thing.
Okay.
Maybe for Stan. He has his radar on us. Just a brief update about telephone between Ford and Main Street. That, how's that going?
All the utilities out of the way. We have a storm sewer in place. Start to build the roadway, and that'll be the quickest phase of the construction process. So hopefully, mother nature cooperates and we have that open within the next few weeks.
Really?
Now, we do have to complete the north end.
Right.
That is, there's a lot of utility accomplished on that stretch of roadway. And, but we're actually in the process of building the road now, so.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? I have one note here. This is from HUD. We just got our notification that our regular annual 2016 allocations have been approved for $305,700 for the 2016 allocation. So that's nice.
CDBG.
CDBG. I didn't think we were going to get anything this year. So that's very nice. Okay. Any items from the city manager or trust manager?
Just want to have Galen come up. He wanted to make a couple of comments since we're going to be entering into storm season soon. And he wanted to make a couple of remarks about the sirens in Oklahoma City's new siren, policy that's in place now.
Well, the computer was ready to go, but it's, it'll be just a second here. Mayor, council, good evening. The, we've been getting some questions, and if we've been getting them, I'm sure you have too. There's been some press about Oklahoma City, and they have changed their siren policy for this year. And so I wanted just to give you a quick update on what they're doing, how that relates to what we do, and answer any questions you might have about that. Okay. So here is our current policy. This is the same tornado siren activation policy that we have had in place as long as I've been the emergency manager and our civil defense director, and probably long before I was there. Basically, it says if tornado conditions are threatening us, we blow our sirens. And we have 38 sirens currently, but they are scattered throughout town. They're, we have a very good siren system, very robust, a lot of redundancy in it. I am very confident, and unfortunately, we've had to use it some, but if we push the button, you can hear it. Problem comes is that if somebody uses around us on three sides with their 182 sirens, as you can see here, you know, where, okay. So anyway, you can see they're surrounding us. And their policy for many years has been that whenever the National Health Service issues a tornado warning for any one of the three counties that they have siren in, then they activate all the sirens within that particular county. So if there's a tornado warning issued for Cleveland County, they blow all of their sirens through South Bay to Main Street. So Oklahoma County, they blow all of the hundreds of more sirens in Oklahoma County and just west, they blow them on Main Street. That has caused some problems. This is a storm. This is the Bridge Creek Storm back in March of last year, or I'm sorry, May of last year, May 6. If you can, it's a little bit difficult to see, but the red box up in the far northwest corner of our county and northern Frank County, the greatest county, is the actual area of tornado, to issue five-inch winds. The storm was, it's kind of where you see the white area moving to the northeast, and they blew all of their sirens that were South Bay to Main Street. And that was exactly what they should have done. That was a great warning. This one was a couple of weeks later, on May 19th. This is a storm. You can see the cell is down to the southwest of Purcell and moving to the northeast. This was about 3:00 in the afternoon. It was a tornado warning that included part of Cleveland County, so they blew all of their sirens South Bay to Main Street, even though there's no part of Oklahoma City there that's threatened. This caused a lot of problems for us, because, of course, we weren't blowing our sirens. In fact, the skies up here were fairly blue. One of the issues was that our schools, their sirens, they blocked school there. This is why the school dismissed that time. I know that there were lots of parents that were very upset because, you know, they, A, weren't being allowed to take their children, and B, come in, come in. You know, there's a tornado, and they're looking out for them. In fact, one of our employees, I don't know, had an issue with that. Probably the worst-case scenario was a week or so after that, on May 20, I believe it was 29. This is a storm that was at 6:15 in the morning. It had already gone past us, didn't do anything here, wasn't forecast to do anything here. But as it got over in the far eastern part of the county, over southeast of Lake Thunderbird, moving southeast very rapidly. very rapidly, uh, the weather service had indicated a small spin-up on the radar, they issued a warning, it's a warning, Cleveland County, Oklahoma City blew their sirens to south of eighty-ninth street, even though it was all, in fact, the weather service canceled part of the warning for Cleveland County one minute after they issued it. So, lots of problems here, this has been an ongoing problem for many years, uh, finally this year, uh, it, it percolated up to the top, um, the, the emergency managers have tried for many years to, to visit with Oklahoma City about this unsuccessfully. Uh, this year, I think a combination of these events and some other internal reviews and the work of Mr. Eadie and some of the other city managers in the area caused a, Oklahoma City to wish to have some discussion, uh, we did that, um, and they were success, we were successful, uh, they have a new policy. That policy now is that they have two things, or three things. Number one, they've changed their policy to where they activate their sirens that are within the particular area of them. Now they, it's not perfect because they, they've had to sectorize their sirens to do that, I'll show you that here in just a minute. Um, and they're, they're, if, if the warning polygon touches any of those sectors, then they'll look for that sector. It's a, a great reduction in the amount of sirens that are on the scene. That's a little hard to see, but you can, you can see they have nine different sectors for their one hundred and eighty-two sirens. Uh, there's two in Cleveland County, uh, basically it's east of Sumer Road or west of Sumer Road, so the, uh, the southwest connect, or southwest Cleveland section there encompasses all the way around us. And, and you can see they have, uh, the other sectors as well. So what will that do for us? Um, this is a storm, you might remember the tornado that's, that actually set down just to the southwest of our city limits, uh, on May tenth of two thousand and ten, kinda tracked over Mayor South of Bearden House, and actually a little spin-in just north of Bearden House. Uh, went on to destroy the Love's Life Building, chalked on, it's a couple fatalities, they took Oklahoma City off that direction. What Oklahoma City did that day was blow all of the sirens in Oklahoma County, all the sirens in Cleveland County, that's a lot of sirens, and a great big area. And you can see with the new, uh, sectorizing and, and threat-based warnings, they'll only be activating three sectors, and ninety percent reduction in the amount of sirens they blow, or they're the population that they're overblowing. Uh, here's one, uh, from last year, this was a storm that actually moved double around, we blew our sirens several times, Oklahoma City blew their sirens several times, uh, but then the, the storm moved east of Great Lake. Before, they again would have been going all Oklahoma County, all Cleveland County, now they'd be going just basically east of Sumer Road. So it's, it's a great reduction in the amount of sirens they're, they're blowing in there for the, the number of people who are needlessly trying to work. Um, a couple more things, um, one of the things that they had some problems internal with that they, they now solve, is that the sirens blow into one of their city divisions, uh, they're activated by another one, and policy's written by a third, which is, and, and it's still that way. However, the division that blew them, which is their nine-in-one mutations, uh, they blew based on the text from the weather service, it did not matter if one of the police officers or firefighter saw a tornado and said, huh, you need to blow, they couldn't do that. The emergency management folks, the not involved at all, they tried, um, on one of the storms last year, to, one of the cell storms, uh, they tried to call over because they knew that there was no threat up in the city, and they were said, well, I'm sorry, but, you know, we have a policy, we have to follow our policy. They have now changed this to where, uh, it's not just the weather service warning, but it's also if their failed personnel, or if they have a good reason to leave, um, you know, if they see helicopter D M on TV, and, and there's obviously something going on, they, they have the ability, uh, you know, Oklahoma City emergency managers can now, uh, have input into this decision, one of the things you'll see from that, uh, if this warning here were just a little bit farther east of where it just maybe just barely touched Sector Three, they have the ability to say, well, let's not, let's not activate that siren, that siren. Uh, again, the benefits of that, they're going to way reduce the amount of people who needlessly alerting, uh, fewer false warnings and so on, better, better coordination, and it's a tremendous thing for us, because now we, we will have less problems with their blowing their sirens, we're not blowing our sirens, but yet, our dispatches, our emergency managers, our city staff are taking very heated calls from people, and are you bunch of idiots, what's going on? So, uh, we, we are very excited about this, uh, and we repeatedly told Oklahoma City that, and, and we've called America for that. I wanted you to know this because there have been some questions that I've been receiving, uh, okay, Oklahoma City's changed theirs, when are we gonna change ours? Well, ours is already that way, ours has been that way for a long, long time, and as has most of us, and I believe, uh, the Oklahoma City, uh, emergency manager told me last week that, uh, his words were that, they're the ones that are behind the talks, so they, they have, uh, gone on with, with what the rest of us can do. So, and so they actually, we, we're out of here. One final thing, uh, the thing that has not changed is what the sirens mean. And what the sirens mean is if you hear a siren, and it's not named on Saturday, and the weather's clear, then you need to take shelter, you need to be doing something. Once you take shelter, then go seek more information, it's not, you know, the other way around, it's not, oh, sirens are blowing up, let's go look out for them, you know, let's, let's take care of ourselves first, and then we'll figure out what's going on. If I can answer any questions, I'd be more than happy to.
So when we hear an Oklahoma City siren anymore, we ought to also be hearing a couple more sirens?
Pretty close. Um, if you're hearing one, now if you live far east, you may hear, uh, there, David, we have the, the map back, please.
Yeah, I.
If, if there's, if there's this one that they're blowing through their Sector Four on here, which is east of Sumer Road, some of our eastern residents may be hearing that. Uh, and, but yes, the, uh, the way they hear their, their sectors, um, if they're blowing Sector Three, then if it's a threat to them, it's very likely a threat to us a lot. You know, there, there might be one that's gonna just barely rush to western part of their Sector Two, you know, maybe, but for the most part, if they're.
Galen, I want you to address the all-clear siren.
There is no all-clear siren.
Exactly.
A, a misconception, and we, nobody seems to know where it started, um, because, uh, no community, at least in this part of the, the region, has ever admitted that they ever had a policy that they blew an all-clear. So again, uh, if you hear the sirens, you need to take care of it, they only run for three minutes, so just because they ran and now they've stopped doesn't mean, oh, okay, I can come back, yeah. Um, the warnings are normally half hour to forty-five minutes long, and, you know, we have a, a unofficial policy between Mr. Eadie and I, that they run for three, they automatically shut off, and we sit there and try and do this for minutes, no information yet. So we, we try and continue to blow Oklahoma City does not. Um, if the weather service issues a new warning, which they do it quite a bit now, right, and I think you're going to see it, the weather service moves more and more in that direction, for shorter duration, smaller, and then more frequent, but, uh, but not, yes, there is no all-clear, and, you know, once you're in your shelter, you should have another means of information, hopefully you've got two or three, uh, by the way, this only counts for one, I don't care how many apps and, and, you know, channel four to five to nine, you know, just because you have three apps doesn't mean you have three sources, it's one source. This, if the battery on this guy is, then you need to watch for it. Uh, weather radios are a good option, we can program those for free, if you've got a weather radio, give us a call, we'll, we'll hook you up with some programming content, so thank you for asking.
You know, uh, people who have satellite TV, uh, that's not always a reliable source being in attack, because a lot of times they go black.
Yeah, the, uh, rain will sometimes mess with the, uh, with the signals, uh, the shape of the wave, and some of the satellites are different, depending on what wave, but, yes, satellite TV, uh, most people know, you know, already know, okay, when it starts raining, I lose, or when it starts raining, I don't, so.
And for twenty-five dollars, you can get an antenna and switch over to live TV, so.
Exactly, yeah.
Yep.
First thing that goes out is the cellphone. It's the first thing that goes out, and sometimes when the sirens are going and they go off all of a sudden, it means a tornado knocked them out. So we saw that last time, too.
Yes, we did. Okay. Any other questions?
Just a comment, this is good news, I actually read this in, just go back in the paper, but we had a couple storms last year, where friends and neighbors could, why in the world didn't more blow their sirens, that storm wasn't even close, it wasn't our sirens, it was Oklahoma City's, and, and they were correct, they weren't even close. So I know you guys have been fighting this for some time with Oklahoma City, thank you Oklahoma City finally, uh, good news.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, anything else? Item nine is a German.
So, is that all right?
Thank you both, would you talk to the both, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hutt?
Yes.
Terry Caffner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ann?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries, we are adjourned. Thank you very much for coming.